I can sit next to you.
All right.
Is he off today?
Top of that.
I call this May 26th meeting of the Albemarle County School Board to order. Ms. Carlson, is there a motion out of the closed session?
I move that each board member certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Lee, that we certify by closed vote that nothing was discussed during the closed session except what was authorized in the motion. Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. We have several motions from the closed session. So, Ms. Osborne, could you make the first?
Yes. I move that the school board authorize the purchase of real property A for an amount not to exceed the seller's current asking price.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Dr. Akoff, that we purchase the property for no more than the-
Current asking price.
Current asking price. Are there any, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
All right, Ms. Osborne?
Okay. I move that we approve the proposed personnel actions as presented.
Second?
It has been moved and second that we approve the staff positions as presented to us. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Ms. Osborne?
I move that we appoint Dr. Beth Costa as principal of Monticello High School.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Ms. Lee, that we appoint Dr. Beth Costa as principal of Monticello High School. Ms. Johnston, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Motion carries.
Last one?
If you had a moment, Dr. Costa is here tonight.
Okay.
If you want to stand.
Thank you, Dr. Costa, and congratulations. And Ms. Osborne?
All right, last one. I move that we appoint Mr. Michael Craddock as principal of Lakeside Middle School.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Ms. Lee, that we appoint Michael Craddock as principal of Lakeside Middle School. Ms. Johnston?
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we prepare for our moment of silence, I ask each one of you and each board member to reflect on the tragic events that have occurred since our last board meeting in Buffalo, New York, and Uvalde, Texas. In your own way, I ask that you please ask for consolation, for peace, and for resolution for every one of those people who were touched in any way by those events in those two spots. So we'll have the moment of silence. Thank you. Each board member for a microphone check. Dr. Kate Akoff?
Kate Akoff, Jack Jewett District.
Ms. Katrina Carlson, Vice Chair.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. And Mr. Dave Oberg is online. He is not able to attend the meeting tonight, so we need a motion to approve of his participating via internet or telephone.
I move that we approve Dave Oberg's participation virtually.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Lee, second by Dr. Akoff, that we approve Mr. Oberg participating in tonight's meeting virtually. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
We now need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? If not, Ms. Lee?
Oh, Ms. Johnston?
Ms. Johnston, right. Sorry about that. Assistant clerk. All right.
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Thank you. Yeah, Ms., it's a motion, Carrie. All right, the approval of the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Akoff?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg? He said yes, I can take it off speaker. Can you hear me, Dave?
Yes, I said yes.
And Mr. Page?
Was that his vote?
No.
Okay. All right, so the motion carries. Moving to our next agenda item, announcements.
I'm going to give up my announcement time to use for acknowledging retirees.
Good evening, board members and our guests that are here tonight. I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. Tonight, we honor a group of educators who have been committed to Albemarle County schools for their careers. And tonight, we recognize them as a step into retirement, or in a couple of days and weeks will step into retirement. And I think about the progress we've made in the school division and the focus we've had on students and all the things that we've done over the years. And it's because of these people sitting in the room in front of you, behind me, that that is all possible. And so, from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of everybody else, we congratulate each of you. Sorry to have my back to you. And we would like to recognize each of our retirees tonight. So, I'm going to read names as they come off upon the slideshow. And Dan Redding, our Executive Director for Human Resources, is here, who will be presenting a retirement certificate along with Jenny Sterns, who has had a very active role in talking to each of these people as they've made this oftentimes very difficult decision. To our retirees, if you all would come up on the dais to be recognized when your name is called, I would recommend not shaking hands, but an elbow, or a fist bump, or a wave, or a nod, or some other way to be acknowledged with our board members, it would be very much appreciated. So to begin, I'm just going to say the names and their schools. If you're here, please come on up. Mary Ann Baker from Agner-Hurt Elementary School. Bill Bossum from the Child Nutrition Program. Susan Bannister from Burley Middle School. Jenny Burgess from Woodbrook Elementary School. Diane Burris, Agner-Hurt Elementary School. Brooke Conover, Human Resources. Elizabeth Coppolino from Woodbrook Elementary School. Loretta Coughlin, Albemarle High School. Isabella Kreitzer, Transportation. Lisa Kreutzer, Croze Elementary School. William Daly, Albemarle High School. Come on up, please.
You come up.
Deliana Eddy, Monticello High School. Diane Espinoza, Albemarle High School. Erin Evans, Greer Elementary School. Chris Faralli, Baker Butler Elementary School. Becky Fisher, Henley Middle School. Jim Foley, Transportation. Dennis Fuller, Transportation.
Thank you.
Stuck. There we go. Thank you. Joseph Gaines from Building Services. Lorna Jerome, Human Resources. Diane Goby, Post-Hi Program. Susan Golden, Meriwether Lewis. Dr. Bernard Harrison, Community Engagement. Lulu Hawkins, Building Services. Carol Hernandez, Albemarle High School. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Carl Jones, Building Services. DeeDee Jones, Albemarle High School. John King, Building Services. Leanne Knox, Human Resources. Leonard Kottasi, Maintenance Shop. Dawn Lane, Croze Elementary School. Chuck Leather, Transportation. Joe LaTerry, Building Services. Sheila Madison, Agner-Hurt Elementary School. Krista Matheny, Monticello High School. Diana McCullough, Lakeside Middle School. Marcy McKenzie, Agner-Hurt Elementary School. Ms. McKenzie, I'm going to take a moment and call you out. She has been the teacher of my child for all three years that he's been in school. She knows him perhaps as well as I know him, and I am so eternally grateful for being able to have someone who I trust so much take care of him from kindergarten to second grade, so his whole school career has been with her. She texts me every day. We've had meetings where she's gone out of her way to understand him. Not saying he's difficult, but I don't, maybe isn't easy. Thank you so much, so, so much. Judy Roy, Special Services. Mike Russo, Transportation. Stephanie Schellenberger, Greer. Tracy Shiflett, Monticello High School. Deborah Skolnick, Walton Middle School. Judith Spellman, Special Services.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Wilson Sprouse, Maintenance Shop. Lee Stegman, Burley. David Step, Transportation. Patty Stewart, Meriwether Lewis. Deborah Stallings, Agner-Hurt. Reese Taylor, Transportation. Judy Thurston, Henley. Deb Tyson, Albemarle High School. Bob Warren, Albemarle High School. Jan White, Agner-Hurt. Marcy Williams, Murray. Cherie Witt, Brownsville Elementary School. Loretta Yancy, Western Albemarle. Tony Zentgraf, Burley. We also remember two of our retirees who are no longer with us. Sarah Healy from Greer. And Calvin Sewell, Building Services. We do want to thank each and every one of you for your dedication and for years of service to Albemarle County Public Schools. So a big round of applause for our retirees.
We do have one more person that I see, Coach Vehovac from Monticello High School. Come on down, Rick.
Thank you very much to the HR team for putting together our reception tonight. And I wish all of our retirees the very best in your retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Costa, for that recognition of our retirees. And it looks like quite a few of them had already taken off because they weren't here tonight, right? So, again, thank you all for your services to Albemarle County. We will now move to public comment. Vice Chair Carlson?
I think there's some other announcements. See other announcements?
If you will bear with me for a minute, because I need to open back up my computer and pull up the public comment guidelines. The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provides for time during its meetings to hear from Albemarle County residents and community members. Before public comment starts, I'm going to announce the order of the speakers. We have, I believe, nine today, so I'll just go ahead and announce them all so you know when your speaking turn will be. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. You'll be notified when you reach the two-minute mark, when you have one minute left, that yellow light will come on, and when the red light comes on, that means your time is done. Speakers during the meeting or those submitting written comments should state their name and address or magisterial district. Speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or the operations of the school division. Although the school board does not respond to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under "other business." And I skipped saying, because we're no longer doing this electronically, but written comments can be submitted to the school board clerk. We got one today from the AEA. So, you can do that prior to the start of the meeting, and those will be handed out to people. So that's another avenue for comment. So, the speakers are Helena Climon, Liz Coning, Cheryl Knight, Vernon Leckie, Catherine D'Atlee, Erin Wise-Akenbaum, who just retired, congratulations, Becca Saxon, Bill Moonkaski, and John Glass. So Helena, if you are here.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Helena Climon. I'm a resident of the Rivanna District, and I'm a teaching assistant at Red Hill Elementary School. I'm here this evening to urge the school board to form a task force that includes members of the school board who would work with the AEA to revise the collective bargaining resolution to meet everyone's needs. A large part of the discussion surrounding collective bargaining resolution has been focused on teachers, but I'm here today to speak as a classified employee. As a classified employee, I support the development of a revised collective bargaining resolution because my coworkers and I deserve the ability to negotiate our contracts and have a say in our working conditions. Along with teachers, we deserve the ability to live in the county we work in. Myself and many other classified employees do not currently make a living wage. If I didn't have support from my parents and my partner, I would not be able to afford to live in Albemarle County. At the last meeting, the board noted that not many classified workers paid dues to the AEA, and I would counter that by saying that many of us are simply not paid enough to do so, even while desiring membership in our professional organization. And despite our efforts being integral to school success, in the past, our raises have not been commensurate with teachers. All of this, and yet, I have been told time and time again by parents, students, teachers, and administrators that the classroom I work in would not function without my presence. Every day, I see how much the other TAs, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, our school nurse, and our office staff do to make our school run. We have a B-based classroom at Red Hill, and over the last year, I've seen those students- We have a B-based classroom at Red Hill, and over the last year, I've seen those students absolutely flourish because of the never-ending support of their TAs. Their TAs who are classified employees and who deserve a voice in their own contracts. Our schools, Albemarle County schools, are great places to be a student. They are a great place to be a student because of the classified employees who come to work every day and pour their time, their efforts, their love, and their passion into the school and into the students. We deserve the chance to negotiate our contracts, to have things like protected bathroom and lunch breaks, to be paid a living wage. Working with the AEA to craft a new and revised collective bargaining agreement would show all classified employees that we have their support of the school board. Our schools are great places to be a student. Let's work together to make them great places to be educators, too.
Thank you for those comments, Helena. The next speaker is Liz Coning.
Hi. My name is Liz Conig, and I am a teacher at Woodbrook. When I started in the division, I was grateful to be teamed up with an assistant whose good reputation preceded her, one of those employees who everyone at the school knew and depended on, a real team player. Well, she left our division in November after the pay schedule and policies were changed without warning in the middle of a school year, making it infeasible for her to remain in our division. This unilateral change to how and when we were paid left many employees scrambling to prepare financially, with the most negative effects burdening those least able to afford it. In my classroom, the loss of a teacher had a profound negative effect on my students, who were already struggling with coming back to school after a pandemic, learning how to build relationships, and who then lost one of their trusted adults without warning. They still ask about her today. This outcome could have been avoided if collective bargaining was in place. It gives employees notice. It gives them a voice. It gives them representation of their interests when decisions are made that affect their livelihoods. This is just one story, one out of almost 1,500 stories that were delivered to you. Each one of those signatures you received represents the story and the hope of a school staff member in this county. And yes, we knew exactly what we were signing. You received those cards. You listened to a steady drumbeat of your staff members, transportation workers, teachers, retired teachers, parents, retired board members, and students themselves testify in support of this resolution, and you said no. It makes me wonder who was speaking to the board privately, who could have been more influential than your own school staff and community. We listened as you opted out because there were not enough guidelines, not enough resources, that it would be very messy and too hard. And it was a gut punch because those are exactly the conditions we work under for these students every single day. You are elected board members accountable to your constituents and employees. Listening to the voices of your staff, engaging with us as equals, accepting our right to bargain with you and gain self-determination, dignity, and agency is the right thing to do. You have to do right things even when they're hard, especially when they're hard. You cannot be pro-democracy and pro-teacher yet anti-collective bargaining. They are incompatible views. We don't care if you say nice things about us during Teacher Appreciation Week. We certainly did not volunteer hours of unpaid time working to collect almost 1,500 signatures to present to you just so we could get another questionnaire or survey. We asked for and deserve the right to be heard and represented in the room where the conditions of our employment are decided. Process matters. Representation matters. Respect matters. I urge you to reconsider your votes, reintroduce our resolution, and work with us to do hard things because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Conig. Ms. Knight, I don't believe wanted to speak. Okay, so it's going to be moving on to Mr. Leckie. And I have, I do want to say, and it's not anything against your group, it's actually so that we have a neutral-based rule. Noise during public comment shouldn't be happening, and we try to hold that across the line, so I don't want to favor one group and let them do that and not let another group do it if it's a topic that we don't agree with. So I want to do that. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Leckie, and I'm president of the Albemarle Education Association. After hearing the discussion and the reasons the school board members gave to not adopt the resolution for collective bargaining, I wanted to publicly clarify some points. One of the concerns brought up by the school board was the cost to the school division to start implementing the process. The collective bargaining budget that was proposed by school board attorney Ross Holden at the last school board meeting is not in line with the Virginia Education Association and the Albemarle Education Association's expected costs for bargaining. Mr. Holden's budget tops out at $430,000, which is well above our anticipated cost of about $60,000. The source of this huge disparity is the belief that ACPS must establish a labor relations office in order to engage in collective bargaining. Those costs are unnecessary since collective bargaining will be with ACPS employees and can easily occur within existing school structures. In these following documents that I have emailed to you and have provided hard copies for you tonight, we outline the key differences between our proposed budgets and address some of the misconceptions around collective bargaining. Last meeting, another point was brought up, the law is vague, and we should wait to see how other school boards handle this. My question to the board is that if every other school board in Virginia comes to that same conclusion of wait and see, the inaction will be indefinite. Positive change has not come about through inaction. On May 12th, the Albemarle County School Board became the first school board in the state to vote not to adopt a resolution for collective bargaining, which was brought forward by a majority of its workforce since the new collective bargaining law went into effect on May 1st, 2021. Your action of inaction has set precedent for other Virginia school divisions. Public sector workers in Virginia have been waiting for over 44 years to start collective bargaining. Change has to start from somewhere. We want to work with you to make this possible. The majority of your staff has told you they want collective bargaining. The staff is the same staff that spends the majority of their time every day with over 13,000 students of Albemarle County. The highest priority for all of us is to focus on what students need. Addressing the concerns of those who work directly with students helps students. Working with them to improve their working conditions helps students' learning conditions. If you trust us to educate, feed, assist, and transport students, you can trust us to work with you to negotiate to improve our working and students' learning conditions. Three weeks ago, the Charlottesville City School Board unanimously authorized their superintendent to start working with the Charlottesville Education Association on the specifics of a collective bargaining resolution. The Richmond Education Association also worked with the Richmond City School Board to form a resolution. These are the historical patterns from school divisions in Virginia. The majority of workers in Albemarle County want their benefits and working conditions guaranteed in a legally binding contract. Only collective bargaining offers workers a guaranteed say in their contract. We invite you and the superintendent to work with us to form a collective bargaining resolution that would meet your concerns. We can do this together. Our goals are the same. Work with us to make this change possible. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Leckie. You guys must be teachers. You know exactly where you are on the line when you're coming up. Actually, no, Ms. Wise Akinbaum. Ms. DiAtly might have been before you, but y'all are going to switch places or...
Okay. All right. Okay. My name is Erin Wise Akinbaum. Sorry about moving out of place. I work at Albemarle High School, and I live in Fluvanna. I came 24 years ago from New York that had a union, so immediately I felt the difference. And I was young, kind of, back then, and I didn't really realize what a union was or what it could do for me, but now seeing the big difference, I do. I do appreciate your sensitivity two weeks ago, Ms. Akinbaum, about this mental health needs in our school. I wouldn't for a minute think that I could say anything about an elementary school because I've worked primarily in a high school. So for the amount of people we have here, I'm not saying you're not experts, but I know that these guys know a little bit more about elementary school than I do, you know, that so they, we need to give them a voice. We need to give me, you know, me, I'm gone next year, but I've worked really hard for this for my coworkers because they need it. We need sustainability. We are losing it very fast in education. And I see it over and over, the rules this year, and it might be the situation, but it's constantly changing. You know, you're asking people to do, like, stand on their head every day and then jump back and be good, something that Dara always says, you can't be good if you're not good. So we have to be good. We have to feel good about our job. We have to have a voice. Research has constantly shown that the first predictor of student's success is teacher-student relationship, and that's one of the precepts of Albemarle County. I've always, I came here and taught in Fluvanna for a year, and I realized, whoa, I can't do this. Where is a good school? And I came right to Albemarle because everybody said this is a school that will go beyond. They'll tackle those problems that you talked about last week, two weeks ago, about, hey, whoops, okay, I have a minute, that if you can't, if we have to, we don't know what we're getting into. We don't either, exactly, but we know that we need a voice. We need a seat at the table to be good. It'll help our students, our cafeteria workers, our TAs. They make nothing. You know, what do they do it for? I constantly think, they're working hard, really hard, and all of our aides, we need them. In order to do our job the best, we need all of the pieces. We need a bus that actually functions, that brings kids not an hour late, not picks them up late. I can't even believe kids come to school if they have to wait, wait, wait for the bus or these kids stay after school for an hour waiting for the bus to go round and round. Now, I know you have some really good ideas about having smaller buses, and, you know, you wouldn't have to be CDL licensed, but, you know, there's other ways. I'm not saying that's not the best way, but we really just need to listen to the guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Wise Akinbaum. Ms. DiAtly.
Good evening. My name is Catherine DiAtly, and I'm a kindergarten teacher in the division and one of many Golden Apple Award winners who were in support or are in support of collective bargaining. When many of you voted no to collective bargaining, one of the reasons you gave was it would be too hard. Well, hard is a four-letter word that all of the teachers and staff in this county know very well because the work we do every single day is hard. Here are just a few examples of the hard things we face day to day. Hard is having to meet the social, emotional, and educational needs of all of our students with class sizes of 20 or more. Hard is trying everything we possibly can to help our most struggling students only to be told that it is not enough because they aren't meeting the benchmarks. Hard is having students who are denied sped services because they are performing to their full potential. Hard is, on top of having to teach our general education stuff, we are now having to take on the role of reading interventionist because the division continues to reduce intervention staffing, and the number of students needing extra support is too big for a part-time person. Hard is being a specialist teacher whose time has been reduced but is still required to the same amount of work while receiving less money and no VRS benefits. Hard is going into a class with students who hit, kick, punch, spit, throw things, and even in some cases threaten you. And what's even harder is having students with those behaviors in your general education classroom and having no help because there's simply nobody there to help. Hard is having to work with students who have experienced trauma but having no training to support them adequately. Hard is working for a division who says they want to close the learning gap but continue to take away the resources and support that are needed in order to do so. Hard is signing a time card that says I worked 36.15 hours when in reality, I worked 80 hours a week. Hard is having to choose work over spending time with our own families and focusing on self-care. Hard is having to get a second job because the pay you receive isn't enough to cover our own bills. And hard is showing up to the school the day after a school shooting even though you're scared and your heart is broken. And hard is constantly thinking about how many kids can I hide in a closet or the bathroom, and is that wooden door thick enough to stop a bullet from entering? Hard is, despite having two-thirds of the ACPS faculty and staff say yes to collective bargaining, many of you still voted no. You have been voted in by this division, by the people in this division, to make decisions for the best of all of us, yet what are you doing? It's, it's hard to... The teachers are left feeling as though we are the ones who are always having to do the hard work, and we need you guys to step up and do the hard work with us in the best interest of our students. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. DiAtly. Becca, you're up next. It'll be Becca Saxon, Bill Mukaski, you can correct me when you come up here, I'm sure I'm butchering it, and John Glass.
Hi, I'm Becca Saxon. I was going to talk about gun violence, and I'm going to leave my documents because I have a teacher here, Sue Haney, who did not get a chance to sign up, and so I'm going to yield my time to her because I think it's important for you to hear the voices of teachers and not me.
That seems fine, but I just want to check our policies. Yeah, it's fine.
Hi. I'm Sue Haney, and I'm a teacher at Holly Need Elementary School. And I had a sign I was going to bring in, and it just said CB. And CB means we have opportunity to have a voice. I know this will bring healthier relationships with each other. It will build more honesty, openness, and willingness to grow. I have taught for 20 years and 10 years in Albemarle County Public Schools. If it were not for NEA and AEA, I would not be here right now. Thank you to each person who helped me, especially Becca Saxon and Vernon Leckie, who helped me have my voice. It wasn't easy. I had my voice this year with Albemarle County that has become so powerful that at times it doesn't listen and hear human beings that need to share a viewpoint. This is a part of our democracy, listening and respecting each other. I come tonight to share a viewpoint and to grieve over the loss of children and a teacher and others in Texas that wanted their voices heard, too. Their life was taken. I must stand today, and I stand together with AEA. I hope the school board will reconsider and honor their word that they would consider CB and give it a chance. Just give it a chance. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Haney. The next speaker is going to come up and say his last name so I don't say it wrong one more time.
Dear members of the board, my name is Bill Mukachi, and I'm a math teacher at Albemarle High School. Two months ago, I sent to you a letter which a supermajority of the math department at AHS signed expressing our concerns regarding the changes to the grading policy. We have yet to hear back from you, the superintendent, or any county leadership at ACPS. Instead, a mandatory meeting was set up with Rick Romelli to help us to implement the policy correctly. When we voiced our concerns regarding students not doing their homework, Rick's solution was to inspire the students to do it by showing them that practice matters. None of the concerns brought up in the letter were addressed by Rick in any actionable way, and the math department felt sidelined. I do not consider inspiring kids to be an actionable solution to our very real problem. From algebra to AEP calculus, students are not completing their practice work or homework. I've spoken to teachers throughout the building, and the change in policy has manifestly hurt student growth and achievement. By not giving a grade for homework, it is extremely easy for students to rationalize the choice of not doing it. Every night, students are confronted with the choice. Do they spend some of their night practicing for their classes or not? The reward for not practicing is clear. They have more time to do whatever it is they want to do. Since the assignment isn't graded and they can retake the test if they do badly, why bother? Our students are making that very understandable choice in droves. Rick loves to bring up the example of the kid that aces all of their tests and feels that they shouldn't have to do their practice. I'm not concerned about that kid. I'm concerned about the 98% of my students that absolutely have to practice math to be successful. Due to this policy, they have no external motivating factors for completing homework, and they're not doing it. Oh, but if we listen closely to Rick, then we know it's actually our fault, as are all things in education. We simply did not inspire the kids enough. What is amazing to me is that anyone thinks that teachers can simply inspire teenagers to do their homework and turn it down in time because of their innate desire to learn. This view is extremely naive. This year has been utter chaos. Students are not completing their working grade assignments in a reasonable timeframe. It is very difficult to maintain class momentum, structure, and insurance understanding when so many students are behind. We are now at the end of the year, and the only enforceable denlight is upon us, and it's extremely stressful for students and staff alike. Students getting lost in a sea of no structure and no expectation. Without having a way to enforce reasonable expectations like doing homework, practicing, coming to class, completing work on time, there are no expectations. Is that really beneficial for the students? Is it equitable? I implore you to consider the effects of taking away our ability to enforce reasonable expectations on our students through grading. These expectations create structure and give meaning to students. To take them away is not in the best interest of the students. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Mukachi. The last... The last speaker will be John Glass.
I am John Glass. This is my third year teaching at Albemarle. You all are a lot scarier up close, in person. So, you know that students and families are struggling. You know that teachers, administrators are struggling this year. You know that our bus drivers, our cafeteria staff are struggling this year. They want a school that is welcoming and safe for them. We all want this for them. But unfortunately, my experiences these past few years teaching have not been meeting that expectation of safety and welcome. And I do feel supported by my coworkers. I do feel supported by my department in the Spanish and foreign language department in my school. But unfortunately, some experiences at our school have led me to, to know very clearly that administrators and despite all their hard work and their labor and all they're doing, do not have the resources or the capacity or the staff to actually back our staff and to back me. For example, this previous year, I brought a student who was cheating all year round and reported it, documented, reported it to parents and teachers. And the end of the year, the administrator asked if I could give them another test to see if they could try again and cheat again. My opinion, my professional perspective, my judgment, was not withheld, upheld by my administrator. This past year, one of our teachers left, and we were left with a teacher missing in our department. Kelly Oxley, Kristen Johnson, Gracie Gambino, and me, we stepped up to fill in those classes. We lost our planning periods to fill in for this teacher. We were told we would be compensated and paid for it. Unfortunately, our kids did not get the best instruction they deserved because every one of us lost our planning period. And when it came down to talking about being paid, suddenly, we weren't going to be paid. Thanks to Kristen Johnson and Vernon Lichte stepping in and having a conversation, that changed. I'm sure you all know, all know, these situations in our hallways, in our classes, are not ideal, and our students and our, and our teachers are struggling. I need to know that we are backed, that we are supported, and that you have our backs. I am not a member of the AEA. And that has been through decisions this year of whether I'm going to stay in teaching. And thankfully, this January, I came to a decision, had my coming to Jesus moment, and I want to make Albemarle my home, and I want to stay here, and I want to know that this community I'm investing in has the backs of my teachers and all of my students. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. Thank you.
We will now move to our work session, unpacking the Gallup Q12. Dr. Kaiser.
Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. Tonight, we are going to do a board session with you around employee engagement. As you know, when looking at our vision and our mission, one of the things that is imperative is that we have our, we have employees who are engaged, which will then lead to students who are better engaged and allow us to better meet the mission. When you look at the words in the mission of working together, of high-quality teaching and learning for all, of building relationships, and knowing every student, each of that begins with engagement. When we look at our specific goals, we know that Goal Three focuses on equitable and transformative resources, and that first part talks about attracting and retaining and developing the highest-quality staff. Again, when you look at the word retention in there or retain, that comes from engagement. The more that our employees are engaged, the better we are likely to retain them, and that will definitely benefit our students. Breaking that objective down, obviously, we have a number of strategies where you'll see, if you read through this, you see that employee engagement plays a key role. And finally, when we look at our success measures, we drill down to the second to the bottom bullet, employee engagement levels will stay ahead of the national trends on a nationally-normed satisfaction survey. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight, is that nationally-normed satisfaction survey. What we're going to do tonight is we are going to talk a little bit about why employee engagement matters, and we're also going to talk about our work with Gallup, who we have partnered with on this journey. We will unpack the data of a survey that was recently given to all staff members and talk about next steps. So why engaged employees matter? If you look at these two quotes that do come from Gallup, "Engaged employees are involved in, enthusiastic about, and committed to their work and contribute to their organization in a positive manner." Engaged employees have well-defined roles in the organization, they make strong contributions, are actively connected to their larger team and company, and are continuously progressing. When you have an engaged workforce, that leads to higher productivity, it leads to greater thought and, greater and more thoughtful effort, greater retention, fewer safety instances, and increased service delivery. In order to figure out where we stand in these national benchmarks, we know that we need to do comparisons nationally rather than just put a survey out there and say, here's where we are when we're benchmarking against ourselves. In order to do that, in our partnership with Gallup, we have given all of our employees or asked our employees to participate in what is called the Gallup Q12 Survey. It's actually a survey of 12 actionable workplace elements that in just a few minutes you're going to hear a little bit more about. And we actually added three additional questions that are also nationally-normed that focus on equitable practices. You will hear about the aggregate of how we compare to other K-12 school divisions, and one of the reasons that we wanted to go with Gallup is because of the number of school districts that do work with them. They have been working with hundreds of school districts, and the responses that they have exceed 1 million responses in their K-12 database. And the thing to remember as we did this, this was important for us to hear about the engagement from all of our employees, not just our teacher groups or our classified group, but all employees altogether. Tonight, we have with us Dr. Tim Hodges from Gallup. He has actually spent the day with us and has done some work sessions today, starting first with the superintendent's cabinet this morning, where we started unpacking division-level data. We then met with, for several hours, with our principals and many of our directors this afternoon, and tonight, obviously, you're going to get to go through a similar type of work session. The topics that we've covered in some, some at a high level and some where we had the opportunity to dig into a little bit and really start thinking about what's next, was really being curious about the data. And I think that's one of the things, as you hear from Dr. Hodges, he'll ask you tonight to do as well, is to be curious about that data. We really wanted to understand some of those benchmarks, and we took a dive into that. And one of the big things to realize is that we recognize this as the start of a process. It's where we are at this moment in time, and it's what we do about this information that makes it actionable. So as we unpacked the results with the groups this, earlier today, and as we'll do with you all, and as we'll continue to do with our, with our leaders and our school division employees, it really is about how we start to plan for the next steps and really starting to think about some action plans along the way. And so what we're going to do is we are going to take you through this protocol, this what, so what, now what protocol, as you listen to Dr. Hodges. In the first part, that's the what. As he speaks and shares information and talks to you about the different types of questions and the benchmarks and the other data that is provided to you, we want you to listen, and we want you to think about the information that he presents. Jock down, or in whatever way you'd want to remember, some of the factual information that really resonates with you. After his presentation, and you'll have a chance to ask questions throughout that as well, we'll give you the opportunity to work with one another in the so what part, where you will think about questions such as, why is this information important? What are your takeaways? And what do you wonder about? What are you curious about that you saw tonight? And then finally, as we report out, you'll think about what are the key steps that you've heard tonight that we'll think about as we move forward across the school division. So to get us started, we're going to start with the what of the protocol. And for that, I am going to introduce to you Dr. Tim Hodges from Gallup.
Thank you very much, and yeah, thanks for your service to the, to the district and on the school board. My dad was a school board member the entire time that my older brother, all the way through my younger sister, were students. And I didn't know a lot about school board meetings, except that he usually got home after we went to bed. And there were a lot of conversations that happened, and as I've progressed in my career at Gallup, I've worked at Gallup for over 20 years and have been to hundreds of school board meetings. It's more fun when you get paid to be there, I guess, but appreciate the service that you all have, and really been impressed today, throughout the day, with the conversations we've had, starting with the superintendent and cabinet this morning. And then we did a three or four-hour session this afternoon with about 40 of your principals, directors, division leads, and including several cabinet members, who stayed very attentive with the cameras on. We did a Zoom session so that even those quarantining were able to participate. And for all of them to stay engaged throughout the day and break out sessions and so on, really does send the right signal. It wasn't just, I'm going to show up so that it looks good, but to participate fully throughout the day was, was very appreciated and not always the case when I work with school divisions and school districts around the country. This is a baseline year. We're going to talk a little bit about the, the beginning of this survey. We just collected the data a few weeks ago, had over 2,000 respondents. All employees were, were included in the invitation, as Dr. Kaiser shared, and really excited that he had about 75% response rate, which is a, is a good response rate for an employee survey. The results are available at the, the school and the team level, and that's what's just being rolled out even today. So, we pushed results out this morning to any manager, principal throughout the districts so that they're able to engage with those results, and that's, that's part of our workshop this afternoon, was to, to help them understand what are these results and why do we care. So tonight, I'm going to spend just a few minutes giving you the, the purpose behind this, elements of an engaging workplace, the state of your organization, and then give you a preview of what, what we did in terms of recommendations and support for the ongoing actions that will take place. We talked about an action plan, and I said, let's be light on the plan and heavy on the action. We use the term, if you can't fit your action plan on a three-by-five note card, you're probably thinking too hard about this. This isn't additional work that we're asking managers and school leaders to take on. It's hopefully a better way, a more efficient way for them to do the work that they've been doing already in terms of creating a culture. I don't want to come across with any arrogance or hubris about, that we've answered all the questions about engagement, and this is all new information. You've got an incredible talented group of leaders that, that I've been able to spend time with today, and this is a continuation of work that they've been doing. There's some new language here, there's some new metrics here, but I don't think there's anything that feels like off the wall or there's something you'd never thought of before, but it just helps you put some edges around what, what you've been doing and some objectivity as a baseline year, and then the decision is, where do we go from here? No one had a perfect score. Rarely do we see anyone, any work group, even in Gallup, where we do this survey on ourselves, rarely do we see a perfect score across the board. So, there's always opportunities to dig in, understand, and continue working forward. And even if you do have a perfect score, it's not a bad idea to keep working at it to sustain that. So, and then we'll talk just a bit at the end about creating a culture of engagement. So, as was mentioned, if you've got questions throughout, please jump in. I'll walk through a few points over the next few minutes and then give you some time to work with each other to dig in deeper. So the first, the first thing I want to share is really this, and that's that engagement globally is not what it should be. I think that 78% of workers not reaching their full potential is, is kind of a difficult headline to say. Only 22% of the global workforce, which Gallup does global polling, almost every country around the world, we survey employees and ask them about their basic needs in the workplace, and are those needs being met? Only 22% globally. In the US, it's better than the global story, but not as good as it could be. 36% is the number you see on the slide. We've just released data in the last few days, it's down to 32% is the US level of employee engagement. As you would imagine, the last two years have been hard for everyone. School leaders and, and all organizations have been going through just difficult times as we've transitioned through a pandemic and, and all else that's going on in our world. So, to have just roughly a third of employees engaged is not enough, and that's kind of our, our mission at Gallup, is to provide some objective data and say, how can we make that better? The next number you see is 48%. 48% is the average of our Gallup client database, so why are clients more engaged than the US workforce? Well, I think that's because clients who, who choose to invest in, measure, and make intentional plans about engagement tend to be a little better than organizations that don't care about it, or don't measure it, or don't pay attention to it. Our client database also has some pretty mature clients. I've got some school districts I've personally worked with for almost 15 years. And what I will say is, not to put pressure on the results for next year, but typically, the baseline year is the lowest we ever see engagement, because typically, when you measure something and you pay attention to it and you work together on it, it tends to get better over time. Now, that's not a guarantee. I shared in the workshop this afternoon, if you measure engagement and then you don't do anything about it, that might be worse than not measuring it in the first place because now they know you know, and, and you're still not making it better. But when we simplify and really make it work, it, it doesn't have to be that difficult. And then the final number, 71%, that's a group of a few dozen clients that Gallup works with that we recognize as Gallup Great Workplace Award winners. We have had school districts, school divisions awarded as a Gallup Great Workplace Award winner, and that's when you've got 71%, and the average there is 71% engaged. So, imagine the difference when you've got 71% of your employees engaged as opposed to the more national average around 30%. So, that's kind of the backdrop and the mission behind this. What we're addressing here is really culture. Culture is the way we do things around here. Culture rarely is neutral. It's usually either getting a little better or being challenged and getting a little bit worse, and so we've got to put that intentional effort into building a culture and, and being intentional about that. So when we analyze the data, we categorize employees into three categories. There's engaged, not engaged, and actively disengaged. And this is based on the metrics of those 12 questions that we'll, we'll spend a moment on here, here next. Engaged employees are fully invested in the work, they're involved and enthusiastic about their work, they love their job, they're great recruiters, even though it might not be in their job description, because they tell their neighbors how much they enjoy working in the division, they, they talk about how much they love their job. They just go above and beyond, not because they have to, but because that's who they are. That's, that's how they feel. When they land that perfect lesson or have that difficult conversation that ends well or achieve that goal, they don't keep it to themselves, they share it with others so that it, it builds creativity and innovation in the organization, and so they go above and beyond. That's our engaged employees. Again, that's roughly a third of employees in the US and nearly that, that same number here in the, in the district. Not engaged employees, this represents about half of employees in most organizations that we study, not engaged employees, and that sounds negative. I would, it's more neutral. It's okay, but not great. So they're not engaged, they might not be disengaged either, but there's just something missing. They're physically present, but sometimes there's something psychologically just missing. It's, it's okay, but not great. Maybe it's been a while since they've been recognized, maybe they're not sure they connect with the mission, maybe there's some unresolved issues that they've not been heard about, and, and that causes them to, to be not engaged. And then there's a, a percentage that are actively disengaged. This is roughly one in seven employees nationally that are actively disengaged. They're frustrated about something. They feel like their opinion doesn't count, they feel like they're not being recognized, they're not being heard. There's a challenge that goes with that, and the challenge isn't just that it's hard for them to experience that active disengagement, but there, there's others who receive that as well, and they, they're kind of being recruited. The not-engaged employees are being recruited in both directions. The engaged employees are really trying to bring, bring their colleagues up a level. The actively disengaged employees oftentimes bring employees down because of that negativity. So, we want to address the needs of the actively disengaged and the not-engaged and the engaged employees across the board. Why do we care about this? Well, there's, there's a lot of metrics that, that we point to in terms of why we care. Being this is the baseline year, we don't have Albemarle data to include in this, in this story, but I'll share a little bit of our meta-analysis. Meta just means many, so when we look at many studies, we've been doing this engagement survey for over 20 years, millions of employees, thousands of organizations, hundreds of school districts or school divisions around the country. What we find is, when, when work groups are engaged, when they're in the top quartile on engagement versus the bottom quartile, there's a drastic difference in metrics like turnover, productivity, absentee- turnover, productivity, absenteeism, and safety. And there's other metrics, too. We look at sales or profitability, or, or different, different issues in different industries. But when we think about that, the turnover, I, I live in Nebraska, Omaha Public Schools is just down the street from me, they're a similar sized school district, about 700 teachers said they're not coming back next year. That's a lot of positions to fill in a market that's really tight. There's not 700 applicants on the market right now in the Omaha metro area. So how can they retain more employees, manage that turnover? Absenteeism is expensive, and it's a disruption to student learning. Certainly, safety is an issue, whether you're a bus driver, you work in the cafeteria, you work in grounds and maintenance, or even in the classroom. And when we think about safety, it can be physical safety, as we've unfortunately been reminded about again this week. It can be physical safety in terms of a pandemic, which we're being reminded about again these weeks, but it also can be psychological safety. Do I feel like I belong? Do I feel like I'm, I'm here and I'm cared about and I'm invested in in a way that, that's worth it? And so when we have high engagement, we can manage through hard things differently and better than when we've got high levels of active disengagement. So that's kind of the background. I'll go through the, the elements of an engaging workplace next, but let me pause there. Are there any questions about what I've shared so far? Let me make sure I don't get too far into things without addressing your questions, please.
I do have a question. Do you find a difference in engagement in public employers versus private employers?
So the, the chicken exit answer is, on average, they're about the same. There is a range, but there are incredibly well managed and highly engaged public organizations as well as private organizations, and there's some that are really struggling in both camps. Big numbers in our database tend to act alike. We do, we do work with some highly engaged federal government agencies, school districts, and so on. As I mentioned, we've got some school districts that are as engaged as any organization in the database. We've got others, I worked with one, one college, actually, higher education out in California earlier this week, 29% engaged, 29% actively disengaged. That's a difficult place to start. You're in a much better spot than that. So there's a large range within, the data just aren't clear. It doesn't seem like whether you're a nonprofit, for-profit, public, private, is a determinant in terms of whether you'll be engaged. It really comes down to those local, the, the relationship you have with your local principal, with your local manager, and, and whether your basic needs are being met.
I have a question.
Please.
I don't want to put you on the spot because you may not have this data with you, but since you've looked at school divisions across the United States, is there, are there studies that show that divisions that have unions or recognized unions score higher on the engagement scale than others?
So again, the, the data on that are mixed. We've not, we've not looked at that specifically and published that, but anecdotally, I've worked with dozens of districts, and, and I see a range in both. But there's also a range in terms of the, the relationship, or what role the union really plays. In some states, a union arranges birthday parties, and others, they're very, they're very involved in day-to-day decisions. So there's a range within. Again, I don't think being a member of a union or not being a member of a union determines whether you're engaged or not. I think what determines whether you're engaged is whether those needs are being met, and, and employees play an active role in that. It's not the manager's job or the principal's job. So embedded in that, I mean, there's a level of ownership that the employee has to take, but there's employees who are members of union, who, unions who are incredibly engaged in their work, and there's organizations that don't have union environments where the same is true. So it's, I wish it were cleaner than that, and I'd give you a straight answer, but it, that doesn't seem to be a factor. Okay, let me, let me share then the, the elements of engagement. So I want you to think for a moment about how you would describe the division when, when it's thriving. You know, when, when things are really going well, what's happening? And I asked this question of your cabinet this morning, I asked this question of your, your principals and, and directors this afternoon, and I heard things like, it's fun, it's engaging. They said engaging. I said, well, that's kind of reading ahead, but okay. But they, they said, you know, you're tired at the end of the day, but it was worth it. We had some people mention flow, which is that state where you're, you're highly challenged and you're highly supported at the same time. And like I say, it's that exhausted, okay, that was worth it, glad it's over, let's do it again tomorrow. There's, there's an energy about what's happening next. There's a, there's a mission about serving people and, and really feeling, feeling like that matter. So those are the kind of things we hear when we talk about a thriving workplace or a highly engaged workplace. There's basic needs that we're working to address, and, and as I mentioned earlier this week, I worked with a higher ed institution out in California, worked with a John Deere dealer in the Midwest, a hedge fund out in, in Canada. Regardless of the type of organization or the role you play within the organization, we all have some needs that need to be addressed in our, in our work. So even thinking here in the division, whether you're, whether you're a para, whether you're a counselor, whether you're a teacher, whether you're an assistant principal, regardless of your role, all these needs are, are on your radar screen and important. So we start with basic needs, and that's just knowing what's expected and having materials and equipment, we need to do our work right. And that looks different in different roles, but the basic need is there. Then there's some individual needs. Am I known? Am I cared about? Does somebody help me see my value in terms of recognition? Do I have opportunities to learn and grow? As I, I discussed earlier, one of the most difficult things in the human existence tends to be just loneliness and feeling detached. And sometimes when we're, when we're really not feeling heard or seen, we can act out just to get attention. And it often is negative attention, but students and even adults would rather be disciplined than ignored. And unfortunately, those aren't, or thankfully, those aren't the only two options, right? If we can get ahead of that and help people know that they're a part of something that matters and, and recognize them appropriately, it, it can help alleviate some of that. Then in the lower right-hand corner, you see the teamwork needs. There's four needs that we address on the survey with this as well. It's that having opinions count, you know, being heard, having someone help you see your importance and, and have some pride in your work, and then a, a culture of trust, where you can share things with people in, that matter to you, you can be real. We've seen fluctuation in terms of well-being in our organizations and across the country in the last few weeks and, and years here, these last two years in particular. So being in an environment that feels psychologically safe and, and where there's trust, and people assume that you're doing well, and, and asking if, if you're not, right? That matters a lot. And then the final two are really about growth, and this is having some appropriate challenge and, and opportunities to review contributions. We talked with the, with the leaders this afternoon about this. That doesn't mean you just got your evaluation filled out, but it means that you had a voice in terms of what you want to contribute, how good you think you can be, what you want to, how you want to be challenged in the year ahead. So it's a two-way conversation, not just an evaluation, but something you actively participate in and, and have an active stake in your career. So we take those 12 needs, and we map those across the 12 questions on our engagement survey. So these are the 12 core questions on your survey. As, as Dr. Kaiser mentioned, there were three additional questions that we asked. I'll, I'll share results with you here in a moment. And there was also one question that said, overall, how satisfied are you with the division as a place to work? That's kind of the warm-up question to help you get your mindset around it being an organizational survey. The 12 questions that follow are really about the employee's relationship with their job. This is not a principal evaluation or a manager evaluation. There's only one question that actually even references the supervisor directly, and, and even that one, that's question number five. It says, my supervisor or someone at work seems to care about me as a person, which, spoiler alert, was one of the two strongest items on the survey here in the division relative to our database. So employees do generally feel that caring environment, and they also are feeling like their associates or fellow employees are committed to doing quality work. Question number nine was another one that stood out relative to the database. So while the whole report isn't, isn't where we want it to be yet, I think it's a good place to start, and so we'll dig in, we'll dig into that next. You do notice there's some, there's some elements on this survey, or some items on this survey that have extreme language. The recognition question says, in the last seven days, have you received recognition or praise for doing good work? That seems pretty frequent. Some people take that literally, and they'll look at their calendar and, nope, that was eight days ago, it doesn't count. Most people say, if I have to think too hard about the last time I was engaged, it's been too long. I've received recognition at times in my career that, that mattered so much that every time I think about it, it almost gets to count again. And so you, you know, we have interactions like that, but the specific language is there because it works. The other question that gets a lot of attention is question number 10. I have a best friend at work. Now, there's, there's organizations, I worked with a bank earlier this week, that said, we actually had a consultant who said, you should never have a best friend at work, it's bad for productivity, what if you have to have a hard conversation, you don't want to do that with your best friend, what if they have to fire you, all this kind of thing. And, and we, our data just reject that conventional wisdom that say, you should not have a best friend at work. When we ask people to describe their best friend in life, they say things like, I trust them, I enjoy being around them, I look forward to that, if I don't show up today, they'll wonder how I'm doing and they'll check in on me, they remember that I, my mom's going through cancer treatment, they remember that I've got a daughter with a ballet recital, so I have to leave as soon as the bell rings, things like that. And, and those are the kind of things that we ought to have in a healthy workplace as well. So when we ask a question like, do you have a good friend at work, the scores are a little bit higher, but the data don't predict performance nearly as well. So that's why we ask, do you have a best friend at work? If our job was to help you feel good about yourselves, we could ask easier questions and add fours and fives together as if they're the same thing, even though they're not. So, so what you see might feel a little bit, a little bit more of a hard-to-accept report, because we ask hard questions. Emotions are difficult things to manage, but they're worth it. And if we can do that well, it really does make a difference moving forward. So that's kind of the questions and why we, why we ask them in the way they do. We want to make sure that the questions are actionable, that they're observable at the local level, and that they link to performance improvement. So we don't ask questions about, is the food tasty, or is the parking lot well-lit, or things like that. You can, you can do that, but we don't, we don't bother 3,000 people with a question like that. If you want to know if the parking lot's well-lit, just go outside at night and you can, you can tell without it being on the survey. We really want to keep the survey efficient, and we want it to be a list of things that local teams, local group leaders can make a difference about without any real additional time or money. So a thing like recognition, that doesn't mean everybody has to get a $50 gift card every time they do something nice. It might mean they get a handwritten note, but you can put it on a piece of scratch paper and drop it in their mailbox, it doesn't even cost you a stamp, and it can really address that need. Or you can facilitate that students or parents or peer-to-peer recognition is happening. And again, it doesn't cost anything, it just takes a little bit of intentional effort to make that happen. This, this graphic really landed well today, and I, and I think as we go through hard things together, it's important to remember, engagement is not something that leaders do to employees, or even do for employees. We've got to create the conditions as a leadership team to, to help make engagement a thing. But, you know, principals, managers, supervisors need to play an active role in that, teams need to play an active role. This is not something where the, the leader is supposed to see their results and make a decision about what happens next unilaterally, and then implement some new strategy. That wouldn't be horrible, but the most effective way to do it is to be transparent about it with their team, to say, here's the results, raise your hand if you think this is good enough, okay, nobody does, let's keep getting better. What are we going to do to make this better? And so every employee has a choice to make about that. Just like we all got to, we all had to decide this morning if it was worth getting up out of bed and coming to work, and, you know, it's been a hard week. And yet, we're here, and we're doing hard things together. So it really is about supporting people in a way that causes them to have a level of ownership for their career, for their peers, for the students they serve. So it's not just a top-down kind of initiative, we really want to, we want to involve everybody in the conversation. So that's, that's kind of the, what we're measuring, why we measure it the way we do. Let me pause again, are there questions before we get into your data that I might, I might address as we, as we roll through this?
This is just, I just, because I'm a note taker, we'll have access to this after, right? Because I know we don't have access to it now.
Yeah, I, I think it's, yeah, it's in the, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just glad we said something worth remembering. All right, let's get into your results a little bit here then. The, the story I'm about to share with the numbers, for those of you who like numbers, it's not about raising the numbers. My job is to help organizations have higher levels of engagement. Your job is not about engagement, your job is about helping make sure that there's, what was it, 12,000 safe miles driven by your buses every day, or there's 27,000 hot nutritious meals served daily, or that you've got every student prepared for college and career by the time they, they leave the division. Those goals don't change. This isn't about how can you get your Q12 scores up, it's really about how can you use this information to make further progress on the things you were about before you even knew Gallup was a thing? So it's really not about the numbers as much as it is the opportunities that come with this. As we go through some of these results, I want you to think about, what are the high scores? What are the lower scores, the biggest opportunities for improvement? And I'll give you both the mean scores, as the average scores in terms of what your employees said, as well as how that relates to our global, or to our, our national database and to our database of schools. So you kind of put the numbers in context, because some questions are easier to say yes to than others. These results represent a snapshot in time. This was back at the end of April. Most of the, the first wave of employees, everybody got the invitation on April 25th, and we always see a big, big response the first day, maybe 40% responded that first day, and then responses kind of trickled in. We sent a couple reminders, we actually extended the survey by a few days to, to boost that last bit of engagement with participation anyway, and completed on May 14th. So, but even that was a snapshot in time. Life comes at you fast these days. Even in the last three weeks, there's been a lot of, a lot of things happening in the division, in our world, that, that matter and, and can impact engagement. So, but it does represent that end of April, early May level of engagement. I wanted to create a sense of urgency today with your principals and, and managers to share their results soon, even before the end of the school year. I'm not pretending that anybody's got an extra couple hours for a staff meeting before the, the last day of school, but there's some ways to share the results and, and build some anticipation for what, what's coming next, and then do some planning over the summer, and, and as people are putting together their school improvement plans and, and getting ready to launch in the fall, these data will be available to them. We do encourage people to pay attention to the first six questions on the survey, the, the basic and individual needs. If our basics aren't being met, then some of those higher-level needs feel a little bit hollow. So we've got to know what's expected, we've got to, you know, have the materials and equipment we need and so on before we're ready to move into some of the rest. I, I really reinforce that we want them to think about the goal for their team or their school. Engagement is not the goal, but it can help you get there. And then the last point says, interpretations can vary. I'll just amend that. Interpretations do vary. You've got 2,000, over 2,000 respondents on the survey, they all kind of looked at that question and thought differently about, what's that mean for me and my experience? Which is again, why we encourage that local level, the local level conversations and action. So my three summary points before I share the, the numbers here, it's a baseline year, it's a good place to start, okay? I don't know, was it, were the results higher than you thought, lower than you thought? I don't know if things are better or not as good as they were a year ago, because we weren't here a year ago. This is a little different survey than maybe you've done in the past. So I really look at this as the baseline year, and, and the goal is, where do we go from here? Do things get a little better? Do things go down a little bit? Next year, we'll have trending data to share with you, but this year, we're going to focus on it as baseline and, and just make sense out of that. Current results largely mirror what we see when we do our tracking polling in the evenings. We call people and interrupt their dinner and ask them questions about their job and their politics and everything else, right? That's Gallup. And, and we do a lot of web polling and things, and nationally representative samples. Your results are very similar to what we see nationally. About a third engaged, about half in that middle category, about one in seven that are actively disengaged. And so no huge surprise from my standpoint, not knowing your context real well, but again, it's a, it's a good spot to start. And there is a range across the 12 elements of engagement of those 12 questions. And there is a range across the 12 elements of engagement of those 12 questions. As I mentioned, question three and four are a little bit challenged right now. Opportunity to do what I do best and recognition were lower-scoring items relative to the database, and higher-scoring items were my supervisor or someone at work seems to care about me as a person, and my coworkers are committed to quality work. So again, I'll have database comparisons for all, but everybody has two at the top and two at the bottom. That's how we calculate the reporting. But we want to draw your attention to different things that might require some action. I'm sharing district overall or division overall results here, but the principals and managers see their own results, and that's really where the action happens. You can imagine the difference between working in an elementary school versus a middle school versus a high school versus an operations role. Maybe you're in technology, maybe you're in accounting. There's very different roles and so different needs throughout the organization. But a common language, the same questions, same reporting and support for that. So here's kind of the big numbers, if you will. The average overall, and this is on a one-to-five scale, strongly disagree to strongly agree. So 3.73 is what we call our grand mean. So that's the average across those 12 questions, across the 2,010 employees who responded to the survey. And so that response rate was about 75%, which is really good for this baseline year. My guess is that'll probably go up a little bit in the future. We typically can see around 80% response rate. I think the first year, the timing near the end of the school year can raise some like, I just don't have time to click that link right now. But 75% response rate, and some teams would have had 100% response rate, but overall, that's where we're at. So how does that rank relative to our database? Well, it puts you at the 25th percentile of our client database. As I mentioned, it's about what we see on our average tracking poll, but our client database includes schools and other organizations that have been working on this for a while, and really intentionally building a culture of engagement. So that's a pretty high bar to start, to jump against, but that gives you the context of where are you relative to other organizations. But that's before you started intentionally working on this, and that's where we go. So 31% engaged, 53% not engaged, 16% actively disengaged, gives you that 1.94 to 1 ratio. So that's just 31 divided by 16. That's just a quick kind of rule of, as I mentioned, I had a client earlier this week with a one-to-one ratio that had 26% engaged, 26% actively disengaged. I think it takes probably three to one before you really feel like you're hitting stride, to have three positive employees, three engaged employees, to help neutralize one actively disengaged. And I work with some clients that have a 10 to 1 ratio, where it's a 4% or 5% active disengagement, and maybe it's 40% or 50% engaged. So I know that's possible, and over time, I think you'll be there as well. So that's the big numbers. Where is that relative to the database? Well, when we look at your overall, you're the 3.73. Overall, our K12 database, the 50th percentile is a 4.0. So if you want to say, what's an average score? If you can get to a 4.0, that would get you to the midpoint of our schools' database, again, including many districts and divisions that have been working at this for a while. First administration tends to be lower than the overall database, so 3.91 is what we typically see among our first administration clients. So you're just a touch below that. And then our overall client database, 4.08, would be the midpoint of the database. So next year, we'll compare you to the 50th percentile, and I suspect you'll be right there. The year after that, you'll probably be above the 50th percentile, so we'll start comparing you to the 75th and then the 90th. So it's fun to go on that journey and see things really improve over time. Brace yourself. This is the eye chart of the presentation tonight. There's a lot going on here, so I really just want to point out a couple of things. One is, not all items are created equal, so there's some items that are just more difficult to score well on than others. Typically, question number four, seven, and 10, so recognition, fourth from the bottom there, that's a tough question overall. It's hard for people to feel like they're recognized in workplaces. Question number seven, at work, my opinion seems to count, that tends to be a low-scoring item as well. And then question number 10, that best friend at work, is another one. And it's funny, because people act like having a best friend at work, they'll get dramatic about the wording, and they'll say, I have one best friend. She lives in Houston. I'm never giving that one a five. And they act like it's a yes or no question. But if you look at the breakdown of ones, twos, threes, fours, fives, it's as evenly distributed as almost any other question. So we act like it's a toggle switch, but when you look at the survey results, people have a way to say it's a two, a three, a four, and so on. We look at the fives, that dark green section, and put a little extra emphasis on that. There's a difference between a four and a five. So we anchor the endpoints on the survey, strongly disagree to strongly agree. And sometimes people will kind of arbitrarily assign that four must mean agree, and three must mean neutral, and two must mean disagree. But we don't label two, three, and four, and our average score is about a 4.0. So a four isn't a neutral. A four is, and it's not a positive, it's almost a soft no. Because if I ask you, have you received recognition or praise in the last seven days? And you say, well, maybe not. Man, it's been a while, but I'll give it a four. You know, I get recognition every once in a while. That's different than saying yes. If you'd have been with me yesterday, I could have showed you this interaction I have with the student that is going to hang with me through the summer. So you see a difference between a four and a five. So we encourage people in conversations with their teams to share the data and then say, what would a five look like? What would it look like to strongly agree? Maybe our 3.9 is okay. Maybe our whatever is okay. But what would a five look like? And when they talk about what those days that they strongly agree are like, you can start to catch a glimpse of what's possible and work more towards that. So again, the highest-scoring items, lowest-scoring items, we've got the mean scores as well as the percentile rank. Your overall percentile rank is 25th percentile, several items above that, a few items below that, but overall, that's kind of where we're starting. And then I mentioned, we also had three additional questions on the survey. These are the three questions that we built custom for you. We have, I shouldn't say custom, they're maybe semi-custom. Not every client answers these questions, but we do have enough that we can give you a database comparison on them as well. So the first question around paying incentives being fair in comparison to the job market for people doing similar work, that's a really tough question to get anybody to say yes to. You could pay somebody three times the money, and after a year or two, we'd all be like, well, I earned that. Now I should get another raise. They talk about, the management literature is, pay is more of a, isn't a motivator or a hygiene factor. It's motivating right when you receive the raise, but we kind of reset our standard of living accordingly, and then we all want to make progress the next year as well. So that's just a difficult topic, a difficult question, as you all know. But your 2.82 average on that puts you at the 25th percentile, which is roughly where you are on the other elements. Then we've got two questions around diversity inclusion and being treated fairly regardless of background or differences. Those two items, the first one around diversity inclusion, issues are openly discussed. 39th percentile stands out in a more positive direction than some of the other items on the survey. The one about everyone being treated fairly regardless of background came in at the 19th percentile. So if you compare those two items, we had a conversation about this with Cabinet this morning, it feels like you're doing a better job of having the conversations about diversity and inclusion, but still have some ground to make, just like everybody does in terms of everyone being treated fairly. That's a tough question, the way we word it, that everyone is treated fairly. Now, I might say I'm treated fairly, but if I have a friend who got passed over for a promotion, and I think I know why, I'd have a hard time giving that a five. So anyway, it's, again, good baseline data to build from when we look at the breakdown on those. So the focus of our training and the focus of our support is really around those 12 questions, because that's where we've got the expertise. We've written dozens of bestselling books and consulted around this for decades, but these additional questions are helpful. You may choose to ask these questions again in the future. You may want to ask some different questions as additional items. Many of our clients during their second year will ask some questions around, like, did I receive feedback on last year's survey? Did we put together an action plan? Did we follow through on what we said we were going to do? Those are nice kind of manipulation checks to see, did people just treat this like another survey, or did they actually plan on something and follow through on it? So we'll talk more with your team about that as we prepare for the next wave. So those are high-level data. I'm going to give you a couple of demographic breakdowns, and then we'll clean up any questions you might have at that point. So the next, we are able to look at the survey results with some demographics in mind. So we did not ask employees to declare their race, or their gender, or their age, or their length of stay with the organization. What they did is they logged into the survey, and all of this was uploaded behind the scenes. So it saved the employee from needing to answer all those questions. It makes the data more accurate because it mirrors what you have in your system. We don't report data if there's less than four respondents in a category, so you see a few of those at the bottom that don't have data. We do want to protect confidentiality of all employees. I don't even know, as a Gallup associate, what individual responses were, so we don't accidentally share those with you either. So obviously, each employee's response matters, but we share it all back in aggregate form, which gives employees a chance to be real and honest and share how they feel. So the race breakdown, you've got different sample sizes here. 1,657 of the 2,010 respondents are white, so many more respondents were white. But when you look at the data broken down by race, white employees actually had a little bit less engagement than other races. So Asian, highest, Hispanic, Latino, Black, African-American, two or more races were each slightly higher than your white employees. So what we like to see on these demographics is that they're similar, and if they're not similar, we want to make sure that the opportunities are not being held back from certain people groups. And from this standpoint, it feels like you're doing a good job of creating a culture where race doesn't determine your engagement. Let me just say it that way. So every employee seems to be at least as likely to be engaged as the majority race, in this case, which is white. The color on these, the yellow, red, green, that's just based on where that score would be in the database. So don't read too much into that color. At some point, a hundredth of a point, it changes color, but just draws your attention to certain things. The next piece we cut by was tenure. So this is length of stay with the district, and you've got some incredible employees that were celebrated earlier tonight. What we tend to see when we look at engagement data by length of service or by tenure, I don't mean tenure in terms of like teacher tenure, but just how long you've been on the payroll is really what this means. So your most engaged cohort of employees are your newest employees. That's a good thing. If your newest employees are not engaged, then we got some challenges ahead of us. So the fact that employees who've joined within the last year are the most engaged is a good place to be. What we tend to see is kind of a U-shaped curve as it relates to engagement and length of stay with the organization. So there is kind of a honeymoon effect for most new employees, where they like their new job, somebody took them to lunch, everything's great. Once we get into that kind of three-to-five-year, five-to-10-year period, things tend to kind of sort out at the bottom. We have hard days. We didn't get a promotion we wanted, or got yelled at by a student or a teacher or something, right? We get into some of those hard days, and we got to make a choice. Are we going to stay? Or are we going to go do something else? And if we choose to stay and we work through those hard years and we start to hit stride, then as we've been there longer and you see that 10-plus-year tenure group, which is 661 employees, that's a huge percentage of employees, you see it start to climb back up again. So again, we tend to see a slight kind of U-shape, but it's good to see that there's not huge range in your engagement by tenure. Then I have a client earlier this week where I had to tell them that every year you're with the organization, you're less engaged than the year before. That's a hard message to deliver. So I'm glad you've got that jump back up at the tenure period, which again, is kind of what we tend to see. Then we look at gender. This is a really exciting slide, where if you squint, you can actually see a difference. I love it when we don't see differences based on gender in our engagement. Again, it suggests that everyone is equally likely to have an opportunity to be engaged. There's no in-group, out-group as it relates to gender. And again, this was drawn from your system, so the way things are coded in your system currently is binary, male, female. There may be some that aren't included in that number. If you add up, maybe it gets to everybody. So anyway, there's generally no difference there. Rounding error, we get a hundredth of a point difference. And then we've got this last slide on age group. Again, we want to make sure that employees are equally able to be engaged, not based on their age, right? Many of your newest employees probably are also in that 18 to 25-year-old, as you hire teachers who've just completed their certification and join, or new employees that are starting with you. Your most engaged group are your youngest employees. Your second-most engaged group are your oldest employees. And so again, it kind of mirrors that trend of younger, newer to the organization, as well as more tenured, more length of service with the organization. So unfortunately, a few of those that retired may be in that 65-older crowd, so we'll have to make sure the next crew follows them closely behind. But essentially, the other groups are 3.74, 3.72. I mean, barely a difference as you look down the list. So nothing real dramatic in those demographic cuts, but I like to share it when it's normal, because then that feels good, too. When it's dramatic, we have to have separate meetings about it, but you're in a good spot as far as that goes. So I look at these kind of data all the time. That's kind of what stood out to me. So let me give you my summary points here, and then we'll pause and questions about the data, and we'll talk about what happens next. So my recommendations are kind of high-level observations. There is a lot of range within the district. Every team, every location has a unique story. We want to make sure action planning happens at the local level. Now, I've worked with enough school districts, probably 40 of the 50 largest districts in the country, and many others that are kind of midsize and smaller. We see almost always a trend where elementary schools tend to be slightly more engaged than secondary schools. In some places, middle, high school are about the same, but there's almost like this gradual difference between elementary and high school. And it really mirrors our student data that we've collected over the years. When we look at student engagement, about three-fourths of fifth graders, which in many places is the end of elementary school, about three-fourths of fifth graders are engaged with school. In middle school, it's only about 50%. In high school, it's only about 33%. And so I don't want to say that student engagement's what's driving teacher engagement to be down a little bit at the secondary level, but certainly, that's a factor that we have to think about. Parent engagement's different. I've got, my kids just finished school on Tuesday, but I've got one, I've got to think about this now, because one of them just moved from middle to high, but I guess I have two high schoolers now, one middle schooler and an elementary schooler. My relationship with a middle school or an elementary school is a little different, because once they turn 16, they drive themselves to school. They don't think it's cool if I show up anymore, that kind of thing. It's different, right? High schools are also bigger organizations. If you've got one principal and 100 staff members, that's a different management assignment than one principal and 40 staff members. And I'm not saying elementary school principals have it easy, but it's different by level. So it's helpful to think about the results at the local level, support everybody, but help them to make their own decisions about what to do next. I did say, let's make sure we identify some of your schools and teams that are exemplary in their engagement, and your leadership teams just seeing the results today for the first time, but it was interesting to see their expressions and their excitement about certain, maybe a new principal, and the results look really good, or things like that. So there's faces behind the numbers. We want to make sure that less-engaged teams have the appropriate support, so they don't stay there. We want everybody to have an opportunity to get better and be supported appropriately. And then maybe the one word I would hope that people remember today is the word curious. Maybe I could say inquisitive. It's tempting when you see results that are less than perfect to be defensive, to feel like this is my team saying I'm not good enough, or whatever. And I tried to show support to your principals and managers. Again, this is not an employee or a manager evaluation survey. If a principal or manager goes into a conversation about their results and is defensive about it, it's going to be hard to make it better. But if they go in and they're curious and they say, these results aren't as good as I'd hoped they'd be, I want to know what you think about it. And if somebody says, well, this item's really low, well, what would it look like to make it better? And ask some good questions and draw people out to say, what do you want to do? We don't want this to be the manager's job to carry it all forward. And even in the action plan, we said, don't put your name next to any of the actions, because then it's one more thing they're counting on you to do for them. We want somebody in the room to volunteer and say, I'll lead that initiative if so-and-so will help me, and then we run with it. So that's kind of the data, if you will. I'll conclude in a moment with the kind of where do we go from here. But before I go there, questions about the data or any of what I've shared to this point?
Could you go back to question five again on the first slide showing the results?
Let's see, this one?
Yeah, cares.
Yeah, so my supervisor or someone at work seems to care about me as a person, the fifth from the bottom there. Your mean score was a 4.06, which puts you at the 34th percentile of the database. So overall, 25th percentile, but that 34th percentile really stands out. And then the quality, coworkers committed to quality work is at the 40th percentile. That was the highest relative to the database. So I'm going to say, those are the two that you're doing the best on relative to the, when we grade on the curve, if you will. Coworkers committed to quality and supervisor cares about me. Those two stand out.
So now, this is like most surveys, right? A five is the best score.
Five's the top. Yeah, there is a don't know or does not apply option, and we'll see that occasionally. Sometimes we'll say, has someone talked to you about your progress in the last six months? And maybe they just started a month ago, and they probably don't answer that one, but yeah. And you'll notice that the ranking of the percentile and the mean column are not the same. So on some items, you might score higher, but it's a lower percentile rank. That's just like on any standardized test. There's some questions that just have a lower hit rate than others. So the percentile rank column is the one that we really want to calibrate your attention to, because that's grading on a curve. Otherwise, the tough items would always be the ones like, oh, we have to work on that. Well, maybe relative to everybody else, you're doing okay on that one. Each of the scorecards have some recommendations about, here's two strengths and here's two challenges that you might consider as you move forward in action planning. And each school, each team has a unique scorecard in that way.
So I guess I just want to make sure that, I have a question, but also just to make sure. So the first year that you do this Gallup poll, you anticipate doing it three years. The first year, you're comparing us and saying if we hit at the 25th percentile, that's about the average of someone who's starting this process.
Yeah, the average, first-year client would be lower than the 50th percentile, for sure, because our database includes more mature clients who've been working at this for a period of time. So yeah, you're just slightly below what our typical first year would be.
So the 25th percentile is picked as a benchmark, because that's where first-year clients tend to be around?
The 25th percentile is just reported because that's where you are right now. The first administration, 3.91 would be the 50th percentile.
Got you. So the 25th is our average, and then that chart that was just there is showing where we went under that and where we went over that, but we're tend to be 25th, which is slightly below where first-year people tend to be.
Right. And you asked about three years. I believe the contract was a three-year contract. So you've got opportunities within those three years to do the survey annually. You can also use our platform to do some flash polls in between if you want to, but our anticipation would be there'd be at least an annual wave where we collect. And next year, we'll have less conversation about the database and more conversation about change over time. Really, the best point of comparison is where are you now compared to where you were last year? Well, we don't know where you were last year, because we weren't here, but next year, we'll know.
Which segues into my next question, which you probably do not have an answer for, but maybe you do. In what ways, if you look at the aggregated data across, I guess, other clients or customers that you're serving, has COVID had an effect? Like, would you anticipate that the results you're seeing right now might be lower than if we weren't... if we weren't? I don't know. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think everything would be better if there was no COVID. Yes, I agree with that.
I guess when you say that a first-year client is typically starting at whatever it is, let's say the 30th percentile, you said we're slightly below it, you probably told us exactly, but I don't remember. Is that a typical thing or has that been in the last three years that you're seeing this as like the start off of?
Yeah. So, it's a three-year rolling average and, yeah, some of us remember when it was 15 days to slow the spread and we'd be, just go home early for the weekend and we'll be back. Two years later, we're still dealing with it. So, our database is starting to recognize the pandemic. So, about half of our database now includes, you know, data that are post the beginning of the pandemic because 2020 and 2021 are both included in our data now. So, what are we seeing as a result of the pandemic? Researchers always like to say causation doesn't equal correlation, so asterisk there. But anecdotally, I think what we're seeing is it's hard, right? Our national data are bringing the numbers down a little bit. Is that because of COVID? Partly, I suspect. Is it because of cost of living increases or, you know, inflation and stock market changes and things like that? I mean, if somebody looks at their 401K or their 401A and it went down, well, maybe that affects their engagement for the day as well. Unemployment trends tend to have an impact as well.
I guess I was just curious to draw it to our specific being because satisfaction seems like it looks good, but then it's actually at the 14th percentile. That sounds very low.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if that's like, you know, I guess hopefully that can improve as it goes. I guess the other question I have because we don't see it is, are we going to have access to, what level of this are we going to have? It sounds like there can be a lot of granularity beyond this. Do we as school board members have access to that or no? Or who has access to that?
Who has the answer to that question?
Currently, I can see each of the principals or managers as of 8 o'clock this morning has access to their own local level results and they can look through and make sense out of that. But how it's shared beyond that is really up to you. Is Brody coming down? Okay. On the pandemic question, one thing we are learning is around remote work, which some roles are easier to do remotely than others. It feels like fully remote is not necessarily...
Well, that's what I was going to ask because I was like, with the granularity, you did point out that you had different, like a corporate versus a public versus, and you said there wasn't a big difference, but with remote work, there's people that are now have a completely different working environment and teachers are unfortunately not one of them. They have a very similar working environment with a lot more stressors added on.
Yeah. Hard to do, hard to work at the grocery store remotely, hard to be a security officer remotely. There's some roles that are more difficult to do remotely. What we're seeing, though, as it relates to remote work, for those who could possibly do that, what really seems to drive engagement is, so people who work from home 100% of the time are not as engaged as people who are in the office some of the time. I think that's the myth that people think it's, "Oh, if I could work from home, I'd be so much better off." Yeah, in the short term on a few things when it's not safe to go to the office. But as it's safe to go back to the office, the most engaged employees are those who are in the office two, three, or four days a week and that they have a little bit of say about which days that is. So, I think it's more about autonomy than it is about, "Am I in the office or not?" A lot of individual differences there, but once we get to a place, again, where you don't feel unsafe being at the office, there's something about being alone that's just not healthy over the long term. So, we can do it if we're all doing it for a season, but it feels like it's really coming back to where if you're not in the office regularly, it's hard to sustain engagement over time. So, more to be determined. Brody, you want to answer the question about results being shared?
Brody Downs, Director of Human Resources. So, we do have the ability to get into the system and pull information by department and by school. You know, principals were shared and department heads were shared the information earlier this morning. So, we've only seen the data since 9:00 AM, I guess. So, we do have the ability to pull that information out. So, if there's something specific, like most surveys, we can do our best to, you know, go into the system and pull it out to answer questions, should there be any. Does that help?
It sounds like you just answered one of my questions about stratification of the data by job type. Did you collect that data? I mean...
So, we do not.
In terms of principals or teachers or transportation?
So, the way that it reports up, it reports up by organizational hierarchy. So, we do not have the ability to pull it out by job title. We upload that information, but we don't have the ability to pull it out by job title that I'm aware of. Again, I haven't gotten into the system that far yet.
It could be added back. I don't think that was one of the cuts of information.
Okay.
It does have location.
Demographic information that he's shared. Location, department as well. So, for example, a custodian may work for...
The transportation department, for example.
Correct, yeah. So, we can break it up by department, but...
That's more what I was asking about, anyway.
Any other questions?
Since you're here, what ways do we plan? You said this should be shared with all. All employees can see the results, so do we, how are we doing that? Are we giving principals guidance? I don't know. I imagine it could be a little hard to go on like an elementary school level and discuss these results.
Yep.
So, like you heard, today was really the first day that this information was available to us. What we're doing is we're asking our principals and our department heads to take their information, really take a look at it, take a deep dive into it, and then really start thinking about how they share that out with their staff and how they get feedback on it and how they use that information to really start thinking about what we're going to do going forward. So, thinking about our school improvement planning for next year, what are some goals and what are some metrics that they may set. It's one of the reasons that we wanted to meet with them now so that it becomes a little bit informational this year, but definitely very actionable going forward. So, they will be sharing this information with their staff. At this point, they are just in the digestion of that and we have not had the specific conversation with, here's the when, the how, all of that type of thing.
Let me give you a glimpse of what happens next. So, here's really what was shared with the groups this afternoon. So, again, we reinforce that it's not about just have higher Q12 scores because if you want to have higher scores on a survey, just buy donuts on the day of the survey and the sugar rush alone will bump your scores up, right? But we talked, then what are you going to buy next year, steak and eggs? And the year after that, you know, it just gets better and better. But really, we want to focus on this as additional information that gives you some focus on what needs, need to be addressed. So, I won't go through this in a lot of detail, but high level, we introduced a thing called the State of the Team tool. And that State of the Team tool has four steps. First, we say, identify what's a goal that you have for your school or for your division. So, if it's transportation, it's how many miles safely driven in a year's time, or what percentage of pickup and drop-off, or, you know, whatever the case, whatever the goal is. So, we start with that goal. By doing that, it makes it so that engagement is not the entire conversation, but the conversation is nested in why are we here in the first place? So, if it's making sure all of our high schoolers are college and career-ready by, you know, by graduation date, that's a great goal. Let's start with that. Then when we get into the data and we look at our results, it helps us to think which one of these elements of engagement can help us make progress towards that goal that we just talked about. Then we get them to hone in on one item that they would focus on. You can't really work on all 16, you know, there's 12 core questions plus the additional. You can't work on 16 things at once. It's like Sisyphus pushing a rock up the hill. You just make a little progress and you slip and you start over. So, we say, choose one item in conjunction with your team's input and decide what you're going to do and then follow through on that and then review and recalibrate. So, something as simple as we're going to be more intentional about the recognition item. I suspect several of your teams will choose to work on recognition. Well, somebody might say, "We're going to make a traveling trophy." You know, the maintenance office might have the rusty wrench trophy and for whatever reason, they think that's funny and they pass it around this every month at a meeting, they pass it around. I understand there's a traveling pencil trophy already in the district and so some of those things come local. Maybe you decide the first five minutes of every staff meeting, everybody gets a piece of scratch paper on the table and you tear it in half and you write one note to somebody in the room who you work closely with that you want to reinforce. And maybe you write one to somebody who wouldn't expect to get recognition from you, but they've done something you've seen. And so, again, that costs 50 cents worth of paper, five minutes worth of time, and it can really make a difference. So, that's what we're asking people to do is identify what you want to work on, what that looks like, and then actually follow through and do it. So, light on the planning, heavy on the action. And if you do that and you feel like you did it well, then come back and work on something else. So, as we create that culture of engagement, just to bring it in for a landing, a couple of final notes. Organizations that make the biggest improvement are the ones that take responsibility for creating a culture of engagement. Again, this is not all about the principal or the manager being in charge of everything, but it's about them creating the conditions and taking responsibility for it, bringing others in and making it happen. We do see a cascade effect of engagement. If your leaders are not engaged, it's challenging for your principals and managers to be engaged. If your principals and managers aren't engaged, it's hard for them to create the conditions for others. So, investing in leadership is really important in this. The time they spent today, I think, I mean, to have everybody on the call for three or four hours is a big commitment to get things started and to keep your leaders engaged throughout. That's really important. We want to focus on the behaviors. Having these data are helpful, but we want to make sure there's an action plan and there's follow-through and that it's not, again, not just the manager acting like they're in charge of everything. In the shaded box there, employees who work for a manager who involves them in goal-setting at work are 3.6 times more likely to be engaged. It's easier to say, "Here's your goal for the year, here's your goal for the year, here's your goal for the year." It's harder, it takes more time to invite people in and say, "What do you think your goal could be this year? How good do you think you could be?" And then to kind of work that through a little bit. And employees tend to set higher goals for themselves than their manager would, which is what I think we see here. So, a final point is just if as a leader, your leaders don't take responsibility for creating a culture of engagement, probably nobody else will. And so, that was our kind of concluding remarks with the team today. So, again, I'm really encouraged by the conversation we've had throughout the day today. It's been a long day. I was able to go back to hotel and get a workout in this afternoon, but we, some of you didn't go home today, so maybe you changed your shirt, I don't know. But it's been a long day, but I think a real great start to what I hope is an ongoing conversation that really happens these last few days of the semester through the planning in the summer and moving forward. So, that's what I wanted to share with you tonight. Do you want to take over for the so what?
Thank you very much, Dr. Hodges. Before the so what or the now what, I guess the so what first. Do you all need a little break?
Yeah.
I would like a little.
Yeah, that would be good.
Let's do about a 10-minute break then.
Get some more engagement.
Yeah.[1331.04]
Bring in the gongs. I think everybody's mic is off.
I think it's on now.
Prior to the break, obviously you all heard some very interesting information from Dr. Hodges. What we're going to do now is give you a chance to unpack that a little bit. And since it's a small group tonight, we're just going to go ahead and do it as a singular, singular group discussion with your, with Mr. Page's recommendation there. So what we're going to do now is give you all an opportunity to think about the things that you heard and talk about, you know, why this information is important, some of your takeaways, and really going after that curiosity about some of the things that you wonder about. It's just an open conversation. We have with us, obviously, Dr. Hodges, but also Dan Redding and Brody Downs from Human Resources. If there are any questions that we can help to clarify the way as you have that conversation. So we're going to spend about 10 to 15 minutes on this part, depending on how the conversation goes. So I'll just start it off, and that is, why is this information important?
I mean, I think it's pretty clear. It's, it feels pretty self evident why it's important.
Well, I think it's particularly important after the past two years of massive disruption with COVID and teachers being asked to do a lot. And I'm not surprised that disappointed, but not surprised that we scored pretty low. And so notwithstanding what Dr. Hodges said, I mean, I think it's hard to compare year one in the universe with the end of the pandemic scores. But I do think the scores are the scores, but it is definitely a base, I hope is our baseline. Others?
I think one thing I found really interesting was the ability to get granularity with the data. Something that we've talked about on the board is a lot of times when we have information coming to us, it's division wide. And ultimately, a lot of what goes on is in a school building, a very specific school building. And so I'm really kind of excited to see where principals take this while being cognizant of the, the presentation saying that this isn't all on their backs. So I guess one question I would have is what help are we going to provide our principals and, and schools so that they can take away from this and grow? I guess is a question I have, like, are there division, like, when we say recognition, do we want principals to be in there, like, inventing the wheel, coming up with the wrench tool, a wrench, traveling wrench award and various things? Or can we help them by doing like a division wide thing? Guess those are kind of questions I have. Also, seeing your face is making me think, in what ways is our new HR department going to incorporate this survey and, and do things with it? I don't feel like it's necessarily our level to, like, tell them what to do with it, but I'm curious and I'm excited. You know, if I was a principal, it'd be kind of neat. It'd be hard, but it'd be kind of neat to see how things were going in my building in this way.
Yeah, I'm curious if there will be a standardized way that principals can, can roll out this information, because it would be really awkward if one principal was, like, really into it and gave out all this information, had these discussions, and another principal was not that much into it. And those teachers or other employees would not have as much engagement. So are we going to provide some sort of standardized template of, or directive, talk, talk to your employees about this? Or, you know, that's where I'm going.
I'm just going to be a listener now rather than an answerer. So.
Say what?
I'm just going to be a listener for a few minutes rather than an answerer.
Oh, are we on takeaways?
Takeaways. What were your takeaways?
Okay, related to Dr. Acuff's question. Compared to, like, most places, we fell into almost like a average with the amount of engaged, actively engaged and not engaged for a first year place, right?
Yes.
And what was our, were our percentage, did I write down the right thing? Was 31% of us engage, 53 not, and 16 actively disengaged?
That is correct.
Okay.
Other takeaways? It wasn't, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I thought it was interesting.
Judy, I'm just going to say, I think we're having a hard time hearing you because for whatever reason, your microphone, so it was like hard to tell when you're talking.
I think it's interesting to me to look at the percentile rankings for the various things, like, our top two are, our coworkers are interested in quality, doing quality work, and someone is caring about my development, I think was the question. And then our bottom two are satisfaction, which, I mean, the questions are presented at the same level, but obviously satisfaction is a much bigger question. So that being the 14th, coming in the 14th percentile is a bit discouraging to me, even though I know we're not supposed to just look at the bottom numbers. And then someone cares about my progress, which seems kind of the same as development, but I can't really tell the difference between those two things. But one of them did really well and one of them did very badly. But so, but I also find that interesting that the satisfaction is 14th, but the pay is fair, is 25th, which is around our average. So that, to me, was just an interesting takeaway that, that's not necessarily tied together.
I would have that, we're just talking, I guess, not doing responses. I would have the add on that. It's a little hard to conceptualize the survey result in some ways because, you know, we're throwing, like, when you say employee satisfaction is 14th percent, something in your brain is just like, oh, my gosh, that's like terrible. But it's not that it's 14th. You know, like, it's, it's on a ranking of a curve. I just, when you were saying that, it's something, I guess the point being that's, I'd kind of be curious looking into it because it can be a little hard, so.
It still feels pretty bad to me, I gotta say.
Oh, I'm not saying it's not bad.
86%.
I'm not saying it's not bad. I'm just, I guess, making the comment that I appreciate him giving the presentation on how to take it in because it's a little bit, like, we're talking about rankings on a curve on a, and I guess I'm also need to be cognizant so that I don't, you know, go lay in bed and cry. That, like, it actually was the majority of employees are satisfied. It's just that the, the ranking is such that we're pretty low comparatively. So I don't know. It doesn't need to be just that one either that I'm pointing to, just like all of them. That's worthwhile looking at.
Other takeaways?
It, it wasn't really a takeaway. I mean, it, I mean, I'm struck by the, well, the data, I guess we just touched on, tended to be the least engagement in high schools, and that's where we see the least engagement of our students. And we've known that for a very long time, that piece. And you sort of wonder how that can be changed. I mean, that, you know, these are the students, it's like, after being in our system for, you know, a gazillion years, and they're getting ready for college and workforce. They're the least engaged they've been in the whole time they've been in Elmo County Public Schools, and that's the least engaged our high school teachers are. That, that seems to be an enormous wasted opportunity for improvement.
I took a note that engagement by age gap just seems to mirror life as we get older. Although I just had a great conversation with Dr. Harrison, who's anticipating a fantastic retirement. So there's hope, but I feel like if you surveyed me, you know, like, right out of college, it'd be a lot more excitement than there is now. But all that to say, the causation and correlation, I am kind of curious how we piece out how to make some of these things improve. Because like, recognition, which he pointed to as probably one of the first ones people will tackle, I imagine, because it's probably one of the easiest. We can see very tangibly how you provide people with additional recognition. But it's harder when it's like, your students aren't, like, that's like a much harder issue. So I'm kind of curious, and it sounds like they're going to have tools and resources, and obviously they've walked companies through this. So I'm wondering what those things will look like to help those other scores improve. Tell me how to be happier as I get older, is what I'm trying to say.
We'll work on that one.
Well, I mean, I guess the, one of the comments was like the Rusty Ranch or the pencil. I mean, I just wonder, it, it would seem to me recognition would have to be meaningful recognition. I mean, you know, I mean, yeah, I can jot down, great job on a piece of paper, but that seems a little flimsy to me. So what, what constitutes meaningful recognition in this environment? I don't know.
One of the things that we heard loud and clear today was the importance of talking with our employees and engaging with our employees about what, exactly what you're talking about. I know, what is meaningful recognition? How would you describe what a five is? You know, it's, it's, you know, one of my takeaways was that it really is, you know, it's not the, the leader of the, the school or the department or the organization saying this is what recognition is. It really is involving the employees with it. And one of the things, you know, obviously, the, the board directed us to come back with a plan around meet and confer. This is a type of thing that we would obviously be talking with that group around as well, to really get some feedback too. That, you know, we first see that as being part of the plan, not the whole plan, but, but a part of the plan. What are some things that you're curious about or wondering about or any of these questions?
So one thing that, I remember he's a doctor, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the name. So I just keep generally referencing the area in which I think he's sitting.
Dr. Hodges.
Dr. Hodges said was, it's important to create the conditions to support these initiatives. And so my question would be, what supports does Gallup provide? I mean, I don't know. Like, what supports are you providing us to, to help us do this?
Your meeting, I don't want to answer all your questions, but, but I will if you want me to. The, so the support we provide, so I walked through at the, into my presentation, the identify a goal, work on an item you want to, or select an item you want to work on, determine what your plan will be, and then review and recalibrate. There's a tool we call the state of the team tool that I provided in the chat of our workshop today and is available as the principals and managers log in where they can see that. For, for, and it's a writable PDF form, or they can, you know, we talked through different strategies about how do you roll out the results? And then how do you, how do you engage your staff in deciding what to work on? And there's some real simple ways to do that. Like, one we talked about was just have everyone look at the list of 12 questions, not the scorecard, but just the list of items, and say, which two of these matter the most to you personally? And then collect that information and decide as a group, not just based on the scorecard, but based on the conversation, which items matter the most to them, what do they really want to work on? And then you can kind of vote, you know, vote on which one you want to work on and take it from there. The website is interactive, so they have access to videos, they have access to questions they can ask their team, suggestions for taking action. Not every suggestion is going to be relevant for your context, but it's, I find it's easier to edit than to start from scratch. So we give them a, there's two pages of, of fine print on each of the 12 questions. So once they identify what they want to work on, there's a lot of resources available for that. So, yeah, and there's, and there's just a lot we've published, and we've been doing this long enough. There's a lot of things, even on YouTube, there's videos about each of the 12 questions and, and things that they can pull up without even logging in that, that can help with that. There was an earlier question I want to, I want to address on overall satisfaction and engagement, and is there a discrepancy there? Usually what we'll see is the overall satisfaction with the district and the, I keep saying district, but anyway, you know what I mean, division. I'm spending enough time in Virginia this week, but overall satisfaction can be different than engagement, which feels a little bit more local. And that question came up from, I think, a principal today, and they said, what if someone's not satisfied with the district, but they love their school? And I, my response was, wouldn't you want to know that? And wouldn't you want to help bring those worlds closer together? And if there's something they don't like about the district, can you address those concerns? Can you help them understand what is within your control and, and bring those worlds closer together? Because if they, I love my school, I love my job, I love my kids, but I'm frustrated about this or that. Okay, well, how can we deal with that? And how can I make sure your opinion counts and I'm hearing you in that? Now, it doesn't mean you're always going to get your way. No, I mean, that's, there's a lot of debate and a lot of things, and people on all sides of every issue. But if there's tension between how we feel locally and how I feel about the district or some state policy or some federal policy, the principal ought to know that, or the team leader ought to know that, and work with the employee to kind of think that through. And then come to the place of like, I mean, you don't always have to agree, you're not going to change somebody's mind, but to understand, if that's bothering you, let's talk about it. Don't just keep it up, because the voices in our head are almost always worse than the reality. So if there's tension, figure it out, talk it through, and maybe you won't agree, but at least you're, you're getting closer to the same page. So I, I felt like the, and the discussion groups and breakout groups today really, really dug into that more. So there's a lot of support about that, about what happens next, and then, but we didn't prescribe, like, you have to do this and you have to turn it in by such and such a day. You could do that if you wanted to. If you were going to say, we want to hold schools accountable for something, I would say hold them accountable for doing something, not tell them they have to get their score to a certain point by a certain day. Because then you get gaming of the system and things like that. But if you say, the expectation, this is really, and I don't even think your cabinet's had a chance to talk this through yet, but if the expectation is that every employee in the district would see their results before school lets out in two weeks, okay, maybe you could do that. Maybe that everybody has a conversation within the first, you know, week of the school system or the school year in the fall and decides what they're going to work on. And, and maybe they report back to HR and say, here's what we're going to work on, and then there could be some support. But I wouldn't be real prescriptive at a leadership level. I, I would just expect and encourage local leaders to do something and then follow through on that, rather than you decide, here's what you have to work on. Because every, every team, every school has their own story.
I don't know if this is for you or for Claire. Within our 15 elementary schools, I guess I'm curious about the range of scores, and if there is a significant range, what we, what ideas we have for looking at that data as it applies to that school in terms of maybe leadership turnovers? I mean, I don't know what it could be. But assuming they didn't all get the same score, how big was the range? And at what level would a big, at what level would it be concerning?
And I'll be honest, again, we just got the data today, so I haven't had the chance to really dig into the schools.
This is your homework, Claire.
It is my, it is definitely my homework. But we've definitely spent a little bit more time with the division information. But, but I think the one thing that I would want you all hear, to hear is the commitment for us to keep this on the forefront. You know, one of the things that I heard Dr. Hodges say three times today is that it's, it's, you know, if we're just measuring this and we're just doing the survey and not doing anything with it, that's a problem. The fact that we know where we are, we've got some baseline information, we can, you know, there's a, there's a lot of opportunity here. The, the reactions that many of you had were not, were not much different than the reactions of the leadership groups as they look through the data today for the first time. And so, you know, I think we, we're really looking at this as opportunity. We're really looking at this as, we really now know a starting point. I mean, Dr. Haas is the one who said to us, you know, we really need to look at how we compare nationally and look against national norms, because until we're doing that, we really don't know where we stand. So now we do. And, and, you know, we, we know that there's a, a lot of work ahead, and it's something that I think that we can embrace and tackle. And to your point, Dr. Acuff, about the, the student engagement, I think that, you know, I, I am not by any means a statistician or anything like that, but my guess is, my hypothesis would be that as our employee engagement increases, so will to our student engagement. I, I think there probably is a causality. I think there probably is a causality there. So we'll have to see, that might be a little study that I do down the road. But I do, you know, I know that you're, I'm sensing the angst when you're looking at the scores and seeing how we did, and really curious about the, even the deeper breakdown. And so that is something that, you know, I commit that we will focus on that. Somebody asked a question about the new HR department. This is, you know, this can be some leading work that we do in that. Especially as we've added to the, or we continue to work to add to the talent team, and really be able to really do a deep dive into this. But it's not just to human resources, just like it's not just the leaders of the schools and the departments. It's an all of us together, all of our employees working together on this. And that's going to be a very clear focus for us.
Our additional items, especially the third one. Is that 19th percentile correct there? Because it's really pretty bad. But with other numbers, it doesn't look like it would be that low.
Yeah, it's, let me check my notes here, make sure I'm not, fastest way to get fired at Gallup's to make up numbers, so I don't want to do that. Yeah, so a 3.67 puts you at the 19th percentile compared to others who've asked that question. It's a smaller database than the other questions, but yeah. Candidly, I wonder what's happened over the last two or three years with the database on that item too. As we've had conversations around diversity, inclusion, George Floyd, critical race theory. I mean, it's, all those conversations are kind of raw and kind of happening differently in different parts of the country. So I don't think we've seen the impact of all those conversations hit this database quite yet. So I don't know, maybe, yeah, maybe those numbers will move around a little bit. But that's the current state. Again, that's a three-year rolling average, so it includes, I guess, two years ago with George Floyd and since then. So, and not that it's a totally new issue, but the conversation, as you all know, has changed. And hopefully in productive ways.
But that is one of our worst categories on the whole survey. But then probably second worst, well, tied. Then also the one about pay and incentives being fair is not very good. So it does point out some of the things that we need to be working on as a division, as a system.
Yeah. I understand there was a pretty significant pay increase over the last year, and the numbers are still pretty low. So that's a hard one. I mean, everybody wishes they were paid more, and you've got to answer to taxpayers, and you've got a budget you're accountable for, and yeah, it's a hard issue.
That's one of the ones where it just is interesting, the percentile versus the portion that, yeah, like what people are actually saying. Because like, the pay is seemingly better. How people feel about the pay is seemingly better than how people feel about everyone being treated equally. But then in the act, that's because it's ranked against everyone. Actually, though, like, a lot more employees are unhappy with the pay than they are about people being treated unequally.
And is that partly because it's more data on pay as compared to being treated fairly?
I think it's just that nobody likes how they're paid regardless of the industry, or the year, or anything. I mean, that, your scores are really low, but it's still at the 25th percentile, so there's a whole lot of people who are even worse. I mean, people are just generally, that's traditionally an issue that everybody struggles with, is, "Do I feel like I'm compensated well?"
Plus the, I'm sorry, go. Plus the way that question is actually worded. I mean, we had a teacher pay consultant a few years ago. He said, "Every single survey he's ever done, the teachers have always said that they're not paid enough." And I absolutely agree. But compared with, in this survey, it's not clear. I mean, it says, "Up people in similar situations." It's not clear to me that they would necessarily say other school divisions. They might say, "I work twice as hard as that engineer down the street, and, you know, they're getting twice as much money as I am." So I don't like, sorry, but I do not like how that question was drafted. It was not crisp.
We can change it for next year.
Thank you.
And how is the satisfaction question asked? I didn't see that in the...
It simply says, "Overall, how satisfied are you with Elmo County School Division as a place to work?" However we worded it. So overall, how satisfied are you with as a place to work?
I see, okay.
And that one's on very dissatisfied to very satisfied, same one to five. All the others are strongly disagree to strongly agree.
Okay, thank you.
For the now what, I guess one thing we can consider, it's not a key next step that I heard tonight, but as we do, like, the meet and confer process, I think this is information that's valuable to share out and get input about what items are most important.
Absolutely.
To teachers.
Other ideas or key next steps? I think we started having that conversation in the last part of the conversation, but just want to make sure I specifically ask for that.
I know that Dr. Kaiser told me that, as we develop the strategic plan, there's strategies in there around employees. And she said, "After seeing this data, that they're going to go back and revisit those strategies to make sure they match up with the engagement data that we have, rather than just saying, 'Well, we already made those strategies, so we're just going to keep going ahead with them.'" So that's a key step, I think.
Definitely looking at making things more actionable. Anything else that you, just want to make sure that we hear from you?
Just, it seems like a lot of material to digest. And with this being the very end of the school year, I would probably do some digestion before sharing it out and figuring out how it matched with the strategic plan, what kind of action steps could be dawned. I mean, it's not, yeah, and maybe have that part of the first week in school. Or, I don't, that's your decision, of course, Dr. Kaiser. But it's just, everyone's super busy right now.
Yeah, there was some conversation about, is there a seasonal effect of engagement in schools? The answer is yes, and this is not the best time to get high scores, as you might have imagined. I mean, you get towards the end of the year in the spring, and people are tired, and especially after the last year or two. So I'm not, I'm not saying we explain away results we don't like because of the month that we did the survey, because other schools do it in the spring as well. Most probably do it in the fall. What's the best time to do a survey? If you work at Gallup, every day is a great day for a survey. If you don't work for Gallup, you could make an argument for doing it in the fall instead of in the spring, and you've got the ability to do that. I know that contracts take a while to get through procurement, and that may have been a delay for this year. Ideally, maybe you would do a survey in October or so, and then get results in November. You want to make sure you've been in the job long enough to have an opinion, which would be at least a few weeks. But that would allow some of the action planning to happen during the same school year. Doing it now is helpful, because it helps you have a sense of, "How did we finish the year?" But then you've got 18 teachers who moved from one school to another, and some new people, and so the results don't feel as fresh in the fall as they do right now. So it's a trade-off, but whenever you do it, our recommendation is try and stay consistent from one year to the next, so that when any change we see isn't because we changed the items, or it isn't because we changed the month, it's just that the actual observed engagement changed. So you may choose to change it in next year. You could do it in the fall instead of the spring, and that's, those are conversations you can have. But, and if you figure out the issue about how to engage high schools at the same level as elementary, we're going to take this show on the road. Because that's not unique to the county. It's, that's a national issue, I don't, maybe it's a global issue. But, yeah, the way we do school and high school is not working as well from an engagement standpoint for students. I mean, we tell little kids, we try and get them to, you know, talk and roll around, run around, and be loud, and then when they get older, we say, "Sit down and be quiet." Well, same kids, just a year older, and they're not always learning well by sitting down and being quiet. And so that's a challenge. I just wanted to point out, that's not, that's not unique to this school. That's a national issue we have, and I want to figure it out. But you crack the code on that, let's write a book or something.
One other question, Dr. Haas. With our local questions or additional items that were added in, you mentioned that you had some materials, or that your firm does, to help, you know, plan or to work on. Would you have the same material for those additional items also?
A little bit, a little bit less, because we haven't collected them as long, and we haven't written books about them and things like that. There is some additional information available on those, but a lot of that's going to come from your teams and the conversations. We've got some good questions asked to dig in deeper, but we've just not built as much expertise around those. There are, you know, probably 100 additional items we do have database comparisons to. We just recommend you keep that list pretty short. We want the whole survey to be five minutes or so. So you may swap those out next year, you may keep those on. You could add an open-ended question if you wanted. Usually, that's not a great way to collect information, because people vent and, anyway. And we want to make sure it's confidential, I want to reinforce that. We don't report any individual-level data, so people can be open. And if they do a custom, an open-ended question, sometimes you can identify who the person is, even if we try and mask it. So this is probably the cleanest way to start.
So I'll just wrap up with a couple of things that we already know about going forward. And again, this is with it really pretty, you know, fresh off the press for us, right? So obviously, we are committed to that deeper analysis by principals, by directors, by us. And to really think about areas of focus to develop and implement action plans. We really want to make sure that all of the work that we're doing is really actionable. We also are going to use this for the goal-setting and metrics that we use in our school and department improvement plans. In fact, that's going to be a large part of the conversation and the work that we're doing in our end-of-the-year leadership meeting, that will then transcend into summer data meetings, and then the work that we do going forward into next year, as we really implement those improvement plans for our schools and departments. And then I talked about using that data as key points for the meet and confer. And again, you know, going back to what I just said, you know, this is something we are very committed to. Obviously, we can come back to the board and give some updates with where we are, and have some schools or departments talk about maybe some of the work that they're doing around it. But I'm, you know, this has been a really interesting day, especially having the opportunity to listen to the conversation three times, listen to the questions that were asked by the different groups. Very honestly, I have been engaged all throughout it, and it's been actually really interesting for me to really start putting some of these pieces together and think about the work that we're going to do. And, you know, like I said, we've got a lot of opportunity ahead. And I'm actually really excited to see where we are, you know, the next year, at the time that we get results back from the survey, and see how we compare to ourselves, and not just the national norm. And, you know, hopefully, we'll see the same similar trends that Dr. Hodges talked about, that this is the lowest year, and we will just keep moving things forward, because every forward step for our employees is a forward step for our kids. So, thank you.
I can't help myself. Is it, I mean, given where we're starting, is it realistic to see much improvement in the first year? I mean, this sounds like it's more than a three-year project.
Yeah, I think you probably ought to work on it forever. Even if you get to where you want it, you got to put effort in, just like a relationship or something.
Right, right.
So to answer your question, what is meaningful change from year to year? Maybe I'll answer it that way. On the scorecards, if an item goes up by two tenths of a point, or down by two tenths of a point, we put an arrow on it on next year's scorecard, and we trend the data. So that's meaningful change, kind of a good rule of thumb. You might say, "Is that statistically significant?" Well, for a division of 3,000 people, most things would be statistically significant. But for a local school or local team, maybe not as much. So two tenths of a point is our rule of thumb. I think it would be reasonable to get there. I think you could get to a 4.0 in a year of hard work, and that would put you at or a little above the midpoint of the database. And then we'll start comparing to the top quartile, and maybe it takes a couple of years to get there. One school that I worked with, it took them five years to get from a little below where you are right now to being recognized as one of our Gallup Great Workplace Awards. So that was a process of four or five hard years. But they're in a lot better place now, and they did almost all the work. We just showed up to offer some input every once in a while. But, so it's not a quick fix, nothing is, right? But I think the openness of the conversations and the commitment to action today puts me in a good spot. So, yeah. That'd be a, if you were to set a goal, or kind of pay attention to that for next year, I think any, I mean, a tenth of a point growth would be meaningful change for the whole division. But you're going to see some schools that are going to bounce more than that. And you'll probably have some that go down, and there's a lot of factors leading into that. But we'll be able to make, put a better story together for you next year about that.
Thank you. Any other questions before we wrap up?
Thank you to everyone. When you said you've done this three times today, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the work. I appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser, and thank you, Dr. Haas, for the presentation. Are there, is there any other business by board members or by the superintendent?
I actually had one point that I wanted to bring up. In public comment, Ms. Kleiman was talking about living wage. And I know, you know, it was two years ago, or some pandemic ago, we were talking about getting up to 15 as our bottom. And I think that we sort of fixated on that number. And maybe at some time, that was a living wage, but I don't think that that is the case now. So, and I just pulled up like an MIT calculator, and the living wage in Elmo County is 1,859, listed on this one that I just Googled and found, which is like 24% higher than 15. So, and I know that like budget season is sort of ongoing and constant, but, you know, I think it would be a valuable conversation for us to have to set our minimum wage not at a number, but at living wage, or at least to have that to benchmark against. And so when we're looking at our budget, I would be interested in knowing what that would be, how much that would cost for all of our employees.
I guess following that, I don't know what a teacher's aide makes.
I thought the bottom was 15.
For teacher's aide?
I thought that.
What was your question, Kate?
It was, what is the, what is the starting salary for teacher's assistant or teacher's aide?
Mr. Redding? It's 50, 50,000.
Starting salary for TA is, I believe it's pay grade six, which is coming in, the first step is around $15.10 an hour. And then it goes up based on experience and qualifications. They're placed within that range based on experience, how they exceed the minimum qualifications of the job.
Well, I would agree with Ms. Lee, then we may need to look at that. I mean, I saw at my car wash, they were, had a sign out front, "Starting at 15." So that, I think that's an important conversation to have.
I would agree with that. I feel like our classified staff is overlooked, often overlooked, and often doing jobs. They're dealing, many times dealing with students as much as teachers are, are providing services that are just as valuable, and I feel like they're sometimes neglected in the conversation. I found her comments really compelling.
That's all for me.
Okay. No other items? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.